Hey, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Town Council Work Session of Monday, June 18th, 2018. Welcome, everyone. Joe, let's start out with the policy for outside funding requests.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. What I did was, after, I guess it was two work sessions prior, we were talking about some type of criteria for outside agencies. So what I did was, through some of my research with other localities, I kind of put something together here for council to digest and see if they have an appetite for some of it, none of it, or whatever. At least, I think this will be a good springboard for further conversations as we move forward. So this is what I presented, something that council can at least digest and comment on.
Jake, I'll start out with you.
Sure. I liked it, Joe. Thanks for putting it together. I think that the only thing that I think would probably help narrow this a little bit, so that there isn't a request from, you know, potentially, you know, any, any not-for-profit, is I wonder if there's a way to narrow the scope to actually say what we would consider funding. I know it's very general, but are we going to say that anything is on the table? Just bring, bring everything forward? Or are we going to say that there's going to be some sort of level of scrutiny that the town will exercise that will only, only consider funds for, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what the answer is to it, but I was wondering if there's a way to narrow what we would consider or not. And I know it's easier said than done.
Okay. I'll have to do some more research. I didn't see anything in my initial research because I was really looking for some type of criteria point system that maybe somebody would have used.
Yeah. I noticed you had a quantitative or qualified version down there. I was looking for a quantitative score system, but I guess reading through all this, that'd be pretty hard to do, too.
But I can look into that, I can look into that further by narrowing the scope.
I will say that there is a Virginia Code section, and I've got it here, I'll be glad to share it, that provides the minimum criteria that local government can make donations to nonprofits, if you want to look at.
Well, could we, or could we just simply say that we're only going to set aside $10,000 a year, or $15,000 a year? We might end up getting a bunch of applications for that, but it's a set them out, and once it's gone, it's gone, and we're done.
That's one, that's one good idea. Set them out each year. Bill, your thoughts?
Well, you already got one on there, the scholarship fund. Should fall in that category. I've settled along, my position has been if you bring us a grant that has some validity, I don't mind matching seed money to accomplish something in the town and community, but just everybody coming in doesn't make sense to me. I like that idea of, I set them out on a fund, that makes sense. I'm going to have to have more time to digest this a little further. I can't just shoot you.
Sure. Well, that's what we're doing. We're just going to be giving the town managers more direction to take this, because it definitely needs to be narrowed and some tweaking done with, and the help of Doug and whoever Joe can get.
But I truly believe that it falls in the, once we give guidelines, it falls in the town manager's purview to determine what he's going to present to us. You know, he may get 15 applications, and he only sees one. And some kind of criteria might be quite useful, in a way.
Actually, I really like that, because then it keeps us out of the fray of being solicited by everybody, too.
Well, we have two good bullet points already, so. Your suggestion and Bill's. Gene?
Well, I like, I like what Jake said as far as the amount, but the only thing scares me, and again, like I said, we used to, we've done this in the past years ago. I don't know why we did it, but we used to help the House of Hope and three or four other places here in town every year. I just think it's going to be more of an open-doors policy than not. If we, if we just put it out for everybody to come in, they may want a few dollars or a lot of the dollars and that. I, I'm just, really, the way I'm not, I'm sort of on the actual, even putting it out there, because we don't have, so far, we only have one or two a year. As far as I'm concerned, I think we're opening the door to allow eight, 10, 15, 20 to come in and request. Then how do you choose from those, whatever number that comes in? You know, I, I pretty much standard, if we do anything, I agree with what Jake said, but right now, I'm at almost a point, I'm not voting for it at all. Just let it travel, just let it come in and let people, if they want it, we come in and then just flip it each one on its own, mayor, and go for it.
Bill, you have another question?
Yeah, I have a comment to Gene's. I agree with Gene, too, because what I, I would say is, you might open the door, but if they get a contribution one year, that throws them out to next year. These people that keep coming back year after year after year, expecting the same thing.
Third point, Joe.
They want more.
Yeah. Three good bullets.
I agree with it.
Yeah. You know, we're trying to narrow this down to be fair with everyone, but we don't want to get into the double taxation, because back when the town, and I remember when we used to have the open-door policy, "Come on in if you need money, we'll give you some if we have it." But everything got switched to the county, and the county funds the library and the House of Hope and all these other 501Cs, so we just want to be careful. John?
I'm really receptive to Gene's point of view, that I do think this could potentially cause us problems down the line. Could open the door to a lot of problems. I think if we are going to move forward on this, a lot of the other suggestions, capping it annually would be one. That's going to create an obligation to keep that in our budget. I don't know if we set it in our policy as a hard cap numerically. Maybe in our policy, we just tie it to whatever community engagement line council has at its disposal in the budget, and that's whatever the council sets it at that year, that's the total amount of funds that are going to be expended. But I also think that, we also need to account for in-kind as well. So if we're doing some kind of in-kind something for a nonprofit, whether that's providing labor, or providing material, or even just our staff time to help them, you know, the, the request that came before us was for in-kind off of the electric charges, you know, it wasn't a, a grant that we were going to be giving, per se, but it was, it was an in-kind request that ended up saving them off of cost. It did impact our budget sheet, but it wasn't a straight-up donation. That's also something that really does need to be addressed.
Gary?
It's a good idea. I agree with Councilman Conley as far as finding a way to capping it, as far as, because I have a reservation of the number of people we're going to be getting. Still, the reservations die in the board. I think there's, there should be a way, and it should be, for, you know, the benefit of all.
Keep in mind that Joe's going to still be, this is going to be a work in progress. Our budget doesn't start until July the first, so actually, we won't even probably use this until 2020 budget somewhere.
And it should be kept in mind that, you know, all the benefits of it should, should go for our assistance as a whole.
Exactly. Morrison?
How you doing?
Your thoughts, sir?
Yeah. Well, I'm comfortable with what I've read, along with the recommendations. I would just suggest taking an agile approach moving forward.
Well, Joe, sounds like three bullet points that, that people set up, was setting an amount, having town managers make determination of who, and the first time only, don't come back the second year. Somebody else has that. Jake?
Yeah, I just wanted to address what Gene said. I think, again, I think this is a really good criteria that's brought forward by Joe, because the problem I see if people come in and ask for money is there's essentially six objective, or subjective opinions. And I feel like that that's been very difficult for me to vote in favor of something, especially, I remember when council turned over and I was the new guy, and everybody was like, "Yeah, we voted for this every year." There isn't an ordinary amount of pressure to say yes, because we've done this every year, instead of, you know, having something to fall back on as objective criteria, where I could say, "No, I don't, I don't think this meets the criteria, no." And so that was my initial push for this to begin with, is because you're, Hollis, you're thinking from, and Gene, from all your guys' experience, but remember the new people coming on board don't have that to, to fall back on. And so this, in my opinion, just gives a little bit of the bumper guards on both sides to help.
Sure, absolutely. I don't know if you're thinking matching grants, or are you talking about donations?
Like, like what Councilman Conley said, with the in-kind and, and the grants. Basically, soliciting the money for somebody's organization.
There were actually four points.
What's the next one?
Criteria. What's acceptable criteria? And you could add a fifth, Councilman Conley put up, would be matching for materials and, you know, help, like we do for certain organizations like Memorial Day. And I reckon that's what I read in your comments.
Right, because, yeah, the wagon for dragons.
Really five, five things.
The trolley rental was not, we didn't give them money. We let them use the trolley.
But we're paying, but we're paying the money.
It's an in-kind donation we're giving them. It's not, it's not a cash donation.
Right. Well, Joe, if you could work your way through this one, hopefully we gave you enough information to feed on that you can maybe help you out, and I think Doug said he had something that maybe, so.
All right, I'll, I'll work on this, bring it back in about four to six weeks.
Yeah, sure, because, you know, we're not even going to be giving money in about 20 more months.
Well, you know, we really, we, we start our budget process in October. And one of the things, when I was evaluating this whole thing, is the cutoff date, you know. For, for example, what we're experiencing this year, you know, we're getting requests and budgets already signed, sealed, and delivered.
Right.
You know, so that was one of the things I was trying to actually pinpoint on some of those policies, by saying if you want any type of assistance from the town, you know, that they got a cutoff date, like the county does as well.
And some requirements on, on the people that are coming, you know, to make sure that they do go to the county and ask for donations, just like all these other 501Cs. All right, sounds good, Joe. Anybody else have anything else to add for this, before we move on? All right, Joint Towing Advisory Board appointments.
All righty.
Is this just kind of like information, Joe, that?
Yeah, this is just pass along. What it is, is we're finally getting the board established for the towing board. Representing the board are three towing companies. Me and Doug Stanley got together. We had four towing companies that submitted an interest in serving on the board. And so me and Doug got together and we chose Hennessy Towing, Keen's Towing, and Tharps, just for the simple fact, they've been here in this community and we know them. And so the county will be voting on this tomorrow, and if council's okay with it, they'll vote on it Monday.
Do we have to vote on it, or?
Yeah, you have to vote on according to the towing.
And then it just gets, the county's taking care of this. We don't have to have anybody there for me.
Well, it actually, it really runs by itself, because you have law enforcement representation, towing enforcement, and in one citizen.
Okay. This is something I don't think council needs to get involved in, is something.
No, the only thing is, is just you basically have to approve the board, initial board setup.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Doug?
One thing, Jennifer and I were talking about this, and she raised an interesting point, that when you have a meeting, you're going to have to have somebody take minutes.
Well, the county, it's going to be on the county's.
Right, and that might be in the bylaws, Doug. And I'll have to look at the bylaws to see if that's addressed, but I do think there's an establishment of the secretary in that.
All right.
But don't quote me on that, I'll have to look that up.
Just one up. Raise it, make sure.
That, that's what Doug and I were speaking of, not just minutes. As Doug was saying, they have to notify the media of the meetings, the public of the meetings.
Right, and that should be all incorporated in the bylaws.
Right, right. I mean, it's just, it's the planning commission meetings and the VAR. When council appoints someone, it's a council meeting. It's just their representative stuff.
So without voting on it, it's going to be in the consent agenda, Joe?
Yeah, it'll be under the consent.
Okay. All right, moving on to the CDBG team.
I have a quick question.
Sure, go ahead, sorry.
Who selects, is the county selecting the board? Is it town selecting the board? Is that mutually agreed upon?
It's mutually agreed upon. Me and Doug got together, we had only had four to pick for three.
Oh, so there's an application process?
Yeah, there was an application process. Four companies expressed interest, and we, me and Doug picked the, those three. There's a Virginia State Police on there, somebody from the Front Row PD, and a county, and then one citizen. Gives it a seven board, towing board.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, let's move on to number three, for the CDBG update and resolution. Director of Planning and Zoning, Jeremy?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council. So the purpose of this agenda item was to keep you informed of the CDBG project. We'll have a brief update on that. We also have a resolution and some documents that need approval. So we're getting real close to getting to the point where we can actually have a contract with the state, which should give us, once we have the availability, to start spending the money and ramping up on the facade program and the other items that previously approved. So right now, we're looking at a, we have a June 30th deadline with the state to finish that long checklist of things we have to accomplish. And so we're on track to do that. And we're actually have, we're in the process today of setting up a review meeting with the state at the end of the month, on the 28th. So I think we're looking good there. Management team met on June 5th, went over the documents you have in your packet. So the, the resolution that we need council to approve effectively gives the town manager the authority to sign off on the necessary doc, documents to implement the program, because there will be a series of those. And then it also says the council approves of the three documents in your packets. The first one is the bylaws for the facade advisory board, which sets up that board and how they will review program applications from the property owners. And then there's the facade improvement program design, that is, again, related to the facade program, but sets up the rules for that program. And the program income plan is the third document. So that would be in a probably unlikely scenario where the property owners decide to sell and not follow through with their obligations, which their obligations would be to keep a viable business in the property for five years. And the way it would work, if you recall, it would be set up, really, a lien on the property, and so a fifth of it would get written off each year, as long as they abide by those rules set up in the contract with them. But in case where they sell the property and the person that's buying it doesn't want to participate for some reason, there might be payback that would have to occur, and that would be program income. That document basically is a required document that says how we will put that money back into the overall program. Yes?
Gary, remind me, is it a matching, so they have to match dollar for dollar in order to get that dollar, on their improvements?
Correct. It's a dollar for dollar match.
Okay.
Each building can go up to $15,000 if they have a single storefront. Some of them can go up to $20,000 if they have multiple storefronts. It's $2,500 extra per storefront, up to a maximum of 20.
20 total, or 20 match?
That's the grant amount that they would get. And so they would have, if they want for the $20,000.
So they qualify for that?
If they qualify for that, then they would have to invest another $20,000.
All right.
Jeremy, going back to the lien issue, if I own a business, in two years I decide to sell it, if that lien has been recorded, does that lien have to be satisfied before they can give it actual title without a cloud in order to sell it?
It would, it would be able to transfer to the, the new purchaser, unless that purchaser decides not to. And then that's where the program income would have to pay back.
That lien would be satisfied, a new lien would be placed on with the new owner. A salt into that effect. I don't know.
It would, yeah, the lien would remain in effect on the sale of the property.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that we're trying to protect, you know, everything, with citizenship, really, in that relationship.
It's all appreciation, if you know what I'm saying, is the way I understand it.
Yeah, for each year. So after five years, it would be written off. So that's why it would probably be very unlikely for someone not to want to continue their participation, because it's only five years and they want to have to manage.
I just want to make sure that, you know, if somebody does get a free ride and then all of a sudden he sells, and nobody has to pay anything back, or whatever they have to do. Make sure that everybody's getting a fair share on Main Street, or wherever, wherever this has been done.
All right, Jeremy, I'll finish your presentation.
So those are the documents and the resolution scheduled for the June 25th year approval. We wanted to talk to you about it before, actually just throwing it off the agenda. If there's any other questions, I'd be glad to answer, but that's pretty.
This is pretty much a boilerplate contract, so.
Yeah, the, I mean, the resolutions, just what I said, as if we, while there's, Joe should sign off on the documents and.
But we did something in 85, 1985, through the same block. We did Main Street in the first.
They probably had some similar documents.
Anybody else have any question?
And again, this is a remind me question, but the businesses that are going to have the opportunity to receive some of these funds have already submitted applications prior to us being awarded the funds. So in other words, if it's a new business that's started tomorrow, the chances of them getting anything is going to be very slim.
It depends how it works out. We have 36, I believe, people that have signed up, you know, so we're going to meet with them individually, and it could be that half of them aren't ready to do anything, that they signed the document, you know, when it comes to it, they cannot be ready. And so that may allow us to do more people that have signed up on the tail end.
So if I were, if I were the first person to sign up, does that mean anything?
Well, we did say that we, when we were going through the application process, that first group of people that signed up, they'll be given the first book.
Okay. But if they can't match, then you're going to want the next person.
Correct. Anybody else? I'd just like to say one thing. We need to keep this on staff level. Committees, Doug, did you have some concerns? If we appointed committee members, then that would create a lot of extra work that we don't need to create.
Yes, you don't.
If everybody's okay with keeping this on staff level, let them do their own committee, whatever choosing.
Okay. Why, why do you say that? So I, I quite follow. Not, I'm not, I'm not advocating for more, but.
Doug, would you explain it to Jake?
Well, the more town council gets involved, the more it becomes a town council meeting, and the more it triggers the press having to be notified. And so if you keep it on a staff level, the meetings can be done at a staff level, as opposed to having, being a town council meeting, and requirement of the press.
Minutes taken, other such things, that we would have to have somebody.
Minutes being taken, and having the meetings televised, and so on and so forth.
Would there be any advantage of having a council member there?
Oh, you're welcome to be.
Yeah, it's open to the.
No, I got that, but.
I think what we're talking about is whether or not council appoints the members to that body. If it's a council-appointed body, it acts more like.
Triggers.
Our, our planning commission, or any other council-appointed committees.
Right.
And I'm correct, if I'm wrong, that also includes, like, advertising in advance that the meetings need to occur. Making sure that, that everything is entered into the public record.
That creates a lot of more activity, as far as staff goes.
So who are the appointed members, then?
That's up to staff to take care of that. They'll find whoever wants to be on the committee.
We have established those, our consipulatus.
The appoint, who's going to be, so you're saying is that the town manager's going to be appointed?
Staff and, and I guess, I believe Joe and Jeremy, is that correct, Joe?
Yeah, from my understanding.
Well, you'll put a lot of pressure on Jeremy, since he works with these folks.
That's right.
Okay. And keep in mind, Jake, too, the committee doesn't make decisions that we would have to literally make any, any executive directions, Joe.
No, I, I'm okay with that. I just didn't.
And the committees are open to the public.
I didn't see that.
No, I'm waiting on Jake.
Oh, yeah. Good.
Good. All right, Joe, working, walking orders on there.
All right, that'll be on the consent agenda as well.
Yes, that'll be fine. And I'm sure you'll be, through the information chain emails, stuff will be updated on this, it's going to be there. And again, any council member could attend any of these meetings. Liaison committee meeting items for July meeting. Anybody want to add, take away?
Mr. Mayor, if I remember correctly, the inspection sticker issue has since been resolved on our end. That's something that could probably be removed by number seven.
Joe, number seven?
Yeah.
Thank you.
What about two?
Ten, Joint Towing Board?
Yeah.
Will be. Well, we'll keep it on, and because, yeah, this, this is kind of first step, and we have to really.
Well, it's just Monday night, if we're going to go ahead and inform somebody.
Well, there's still information that we need to keep.
Okay, it's fine. I just, just.
County's taking care of it, but we need to stay in the loop, and that's one way we can stay in the loop through that. Anybody need to add anything?
Well, number five, we're not at, but number five, I'm wondering, maybe.
That's done.
That's done.
That's completed. You've given that report, and I've given it a report to death that the committees, okay, we'll take off five. Always good to have Warren County in-town projects. I know we get kind of like a redundancy of reports when Doug comes and lets us know, but it's good to keep. All right, who's going to join me, and where are we going to meet?
It is at the county building.
Okay.
And I have Councilman Gillespie down. So correct me if they're remembering differently, it's been so long, but that's who I have.
Well, I can't even say that. And these are every three months, correct?
That's what I have.
Okay. You haven't been to one yet, have you? Oh, you have? Bill, have you been to one? Yeah, I guess. I guess it's Gillespie, yeah.
If you can't make it, just let me know, and I'll try to wrangle up someone else to.
There's always kind people like Councilman Seelock that will fill in for you. He likes to do.
If you don't mind referring my calls.
Yeah. Okay, guys, wrapping up for tonight for council discussion. Gold, anybody have any goals? Jacob?
Two, please.
Two-fold.
Both, both, I know, kind of sensitive. On our May 21st meeting, we talked about the capital projects, and I just wanted to, you have to answer now, Joe, I wanted to know if we're going to have DJ come back and talk about the available funds or not the next couple of months, or month, or something like that.
Actually, we were trying to make that happen tonight, so right now, we're pushing it to the next work session. We've run into a little hiccup with some numbers, and we're trying to verify everything that we present, very accurate numbers, but it's, it's on the cusp of, of coming back to you as soon as we can get our numbers straight.
Gary? Oh, I'm sorry, you got two. Sorry, sorry, Gene.
Correct. I just remember, we just kind of left that as, we're going to get on another agenda, so I was just checking on it. The other thing, I guess I'm kind of out of the loop, but I mean, I was wondering if we're going to be able to have a discussion as council about the news article with the EDA, or get an update on that at some point?
I don't know what we would discuss. I mean, it's kind of, I would think it's kind of premature. Charges have been filed, or whatever, but I mean, it's, it's had been charged. So at this, at this point, does anybody else want to chime in on that? I mean, I, I don't, I don't know what to discuss, because it's just, you know, it's kind of like not being found guilty until guilty, or something like that.
Well, since we're not involved with the EDA.
Yeah.
Directly, I don't think we want to get involved. Directly, I don't think we want to get involved in that respect.
I think, Gene, didn't we leave it the last time that if any individual council member wanted to speak with Ms. McDonald?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would probably be, you know, that way you can talk first one-on-one. Bill? Is that good advice, have one-on-one with the EDA? I mean, we're not.
No, we're, we're a sponsor of the EDA, but the EDA is a separate entity. The county board and us, they actually do work for us, but they're a separate.
We'll see how that goes and then talk about it later. I don't think that it is, I don't think that we're completely removed as you're suggesting because the projects are, projects that are happening.
That's correct, yeah. They're taking care of our projects.
Yeah, so that's fine.
Okay. Gary?
I was wondering if we have the meeting with Winchester City?
Come on.
Gene? Anybody?
Well, yeah, I do, I do.
Oh, you do? Okay, go ahead. Just shut him right down after you.
Going, that's, going back to the Chrysler Road Bridge, how much holdup do we have in that rain? Is, is still tracking okay?
Yeah, they're still on schedule. I don't think that rain slowed them down at all.
I never, I just wondered.
I mean, they moved in, they moved in day one and started removing the decking and everything and they're, they're hitting it hard.
Good.
I'm real impressed with them.
Bill?
I got two comments. Crosswalk safety, I don't know if you all noticed, but I have the painting of crosswalks, their, the, all of that is really showing some results. I start, I'm starting to see people crossing with cars stopping. We still have some issues, we're working hard on that. The chief, the town manager and staff, there's going to, we'll come out with a recommendation here shortly for improvements. The second thing, I got a letter from a citizen or an email, and he recognizes the work that's being done on the crosswalks and he's very appreciative. The second thing that he brings up, and I don't know the validity of it, but he's a cyclist and he likes the, the way we've got things looping around, but the Kaiser Road Bridge being out has no crossover for cyclists or pedestrians. So we went to a lot of effort to put, you know, a, a walking path or cyc- cycles path and now they have no way to get across.
Well, they have to go down to South Commerce.
I, I just bring it, I'm just bringing it up.
Yeah, there's no way to cross since the bridge.
Well, I think what he was suggesting, could they have, is there a wooden path that could be put across this thing on a temporary basis?
By the time we went and did a work session and got all the prices and did the work, the bridge would be done before it got done. I would also, not to be sarcastic, Bill, but.
All right, all right, I, I'm just bringing that.
Yeah, that, that question has been brought before me too and, and it was pretty much decided when you're coming down Chrysler going to shop and save, that you would go down to South Street and go across the bridge and come back up on the other side. Anybody else? Yes, John?
Joe, where do we stand on the radios for the police department?
Let me give, Chief give you an update. Chief?
I'm actually hoping to have some representatives from the, from the company that we're dealing with at the July 16th work, work session, so we'll be able to answer a whole lot more questions then. We're still working on it, we had them, had a meeting with them last week. So that's, that's the date that we're kind of shooting at. I'm going to be coordinating with the town manager to get, to get us on the work session for, hopefully from July 16th.
Thank you, Chief. Jake?
Yeah, sorry.
That's all right, just, oh, hey.
Can we all get rid of the meeting?
We have plenty.
Yeah, I was going to say, this is the first time. I was just curious if we're, Councilman Seelock has mentioned a couple of times that it's going to be kind of costly for the crosswalk initiatives and painting stuff and I was wondering if we have the, the total cost of that and what's going on because I agree it's a really important initiative, but I'm not going to lie, the more we, more effort we put into it and the more I'm noticing, I was coming home today on 340 Shenandoah, North Shenandoah, a mother and baby was standing right out in the middle of the road with her baby right across from 17th Street. And it just frustrates me because we're spending, seemingly we're going to be spending a lot of money on these initiatives and I don't know that that's going to stop behavior, particularly off of North Shenandoah. And then again, we had the accident on, what, North Royal?
South Royal.
South Royal. And I went up and down that street last weekend so many times and almost every time somebody is going across at a different spot. I've never seen anybody use the crosswalk, see them cross the road at the most inopportune time.
Chief, is that still on investigation? The one where the cyclist supposedly came off the sidewalk and got ran over and is that still?
It's, it's, it's still active, but I mean, it's, it's pretty much the investigation portion is wrapped up.
Yeah, I, I see and I think all councilmen and citizens see it all the time, that all kinds of stuff's going on. We're putting in all these trails for people to get out and walk and we're prompting them to get out of the house and start walking and, you know, maybe we're putting them in nature and stuff.
Well, I guess to my point of the North Shenandoah, some, I don't know what the solution is there, but we can put all the crosswalks and stoplights in up and further up all day long and unless something goes in around those hotels, they're just going to keep crossing.
Bill, can you call us in on that? Where your committee is, committee is at? Or Joe?
Do you think we're ready, Joe?
Yeah, I think we can discuss it, you know, at a.
Work session.
High level and then next work session bring it, bring in the paperwork.
Yeah, I, I don't have to open that up now, I can follow.
Well, yeah, we wouldn't have it, but yeah, there's something going on and.
But we have worked, with Bill and the committee, we have worked out a, a really good solution for North Shenandoah.
Okay.
I think we spent somewhere around a hundred thousand so far?
No, we're going to be, we have another meeting Wednesday and that's where I want to confirm all the prices and everything and delivery times.
We had prior, spent last year.
Oh, yeah, we privately, we've spent 70 to 90,000 doing the crosswalks. But there is something that we've worked to design, it's called a mid-block crossing that will be, allow for pedestrians to cross and it'll actually stop the flow of traffic. And since it's kind of like a traffic light, but it's only activated by pedestrians in itself. And, and so that's what we're looking at and that is a good solution for that area. It's really about the only solution right now for that area. It does have a price tag and, and that's where we were going to be coming back to try to fund that.
Well, what made me think about that is the ordinance on the jaywalking. And so knowing that that's going to have a hefty price tag, you know, makes it a little bit more palatable if we're going to enforce jaywalking because the monies we're spending.
You also have to remember this committee looked at five steps in this thing and enforcement being the final phase. We've, we have pushed strongly. Education, you see the signs up, you see us going on radio. Some of the newspapers and different people I will be approaching for more education fees. Before the chief can do anything enforcement-wise, that's why this jay, jaywalking thing was initiated. He has some real concerns about, you know, pushing ticketing someone without some kind of ordinance to cover what's. And we all see it. I hear you, you complain about that, but I also see people in the middle of crosswalk that people and vehicles don't stop either. So I've seen it all, just like you. But if we don't do anything, what is, what is the price of a life? You know, that's what I keep thinking about. You know, I know in manufacturing, everything came to a halt if you had a fatality until you resolved and came up with a plan of action. And that's what we're trying to do on this committee. We can't afford to have fatalities in this community with pedestrians.
I, I agree with that. We also can't put a crosswalk at every bend incurred right throughout Front Row.
And we understand.
And I don't think some of the state codes that we've looked at does not recommend that anyway.
Anyone else? Joe, how are we making out on Main Street for construction that are moving in? Monday, yesterday, today or next week?
Um, we had a pre-con on Friday, they mobilized today. Started construction today, we're going to let them mobilize and get started and then at our first, first progress meeting, we'll start sitting down and looking at the schedule and stuff like that.
Do you have anything to bring to the table, any information you want to share, anything or nothing? Okay. Tight lift? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.